Of the board, public hearing, department reports, town administrators update, and then action items that include acceptance of the resignation of Gail Watson from the Cultural Council, acceptance of the resignation of Chris Kastendike from the Design and Review Committee, consideration and possible action. Robin, please mute yourself. The consideration and possible action of Alex Lane to the Cultural Council, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Michael Colette to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, consideration and possible action on the resignation of firefighter David Tetralp, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Bay State Brewing Company for certain farmers markets, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of ministers, citizens forum, executive session, and adjournment. So with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, I would just like to take a moment of silence tonight just to consider everybody, you know, who just operates in the emergency medical service space and all of our paramedics and people have just served for a long period of time and just with the recognition that unfortunately it is the type of job that a lot of take does take some people's lives and their bodies and I just don't think we can thank them enough for their service. So with that, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Two public service announcements. I'll begin the Arbor Day proclamation on April 28th, 2025. You know, we are celebrating Arbor Day here in the town and I urge all the citizens of service to celebrate Arbor Day, which was a few days ago. So, but with that, we it is important just to consider the place we live and how fortunate we are to have all of this green space. So with that, I'd also like to note to everybody at home and everybody in the audience that May 13th to 18th is the flea the first flea market of the year, so just be cognizant of for travel reasons and plan accordingly. And additionally, we have a fun event at four tomorrow at the Senior Center with an open house, so come please see the new senior center that so many people in this community worked hard to get past and to and this because she's here, I just want to know, thank you last week for all your hard work through this and getting us to this point. And so with that, Mary, do you have any public service announcements?
Just the schedule for Memorial Day Parade is out online now.
Great. Excellent. All right.
Doesn't change much.
Who's sponsoring it? Is it the Legion?
The Legion.
Okay.
Yeah, the Legion always.
I thought so, but I know there was an issue a few years ago with that.
All right. Mary Dowling, any public service announcements?
No.
Mary Lou?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Reorganization of the board, as we don't have a full board tonight, it probably makes sense to continue unless someone has strong opinions. Okay, so we're going to continue that. And as it is 6:30 on the nose, Mary, can you please read the the public hearing?
Yes, I will. Okay, Mary, before you do that, Fran, usually we put the time to the left when we have public hearings. I know it's in the legal notice, but anyone just going quickly online would see public hearing 6:35.
Oh, it says 6:45 in the in this notice. What does the actual but her notice say?
It's just not off to the left, she means.
Yeah, it says 6:45.
Yeah, the notice in here says 6:45, so I might have to wait 10 minutes, but what did the actual legal notice say that ran on April 30th? Okay, so then, never mind, we're not going to read the meeting into the thing yet. We got 10 minutes. Thank you for pointing that out, Mary. Robin, can you please run through your memo quickly?
Yep, very briefly, you all received the update, the detailed update on a on the more umbrella note. I want to thank everybody for a very successful town meeting. I want to thank the residents, it was the largest one since I've been here. I want to thank Lynn Gerard, Frances, everybody who stepped up, of course, the Finance Committee, and moderator Lee Darren, who did a great job, I think, and a very successful night. Thanks to the board and everybody in our staff. Memorial Day is mentioned, you're all set, and Michelle Durkey is working for us, she's our interim Veterans Agent. She is assisting in part of this. I did send out the schedule today and as as select board member Blanchard indicated, it is out and about for people to see. And it also is an announcement, Mr. Brier will continue his Revolutionary War remembrance May 22nd at 10:00 a.m. across the street. All are welcome and invited. If you haven't been, it's a beautiful ceremony. Cedar Lake update ADA accessibility project continues. We do apologize for the inconvenience. This should be done in plenty of time for the recreation season there. It's just unfortunately through May, we're going to have limited access for the public while we work on this. And the Commons Electrical, you'll see the three stored lights are back up. They're working on the photocell to get the timing right on when they come on. The library poles will go in next, but we wanted to get the work and the trenching done on the common. The vast majority of the work is complete and we should be ready to roll for the season. So that is it on my update generally.
Great. All right, thank you for that. Leslie, do you want to?
Hop up.
Yeah, hop up.
Thank you very much for having me. I did not do a report because I got to see your cases instead. Yes, and I feel very much like not giving a report if I get to see you. This has been the first time I've done a meeting in 15 months, plus 15 months, probably two years, so I have a lot to fill you in on, but I'll be very quick. As Jamie said, thank you very much. We will be having our open house tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:30. We hope everyone stops by. It's a beautiful building, we love it. For the last 15 months, I did not give you guys an update on this, but I'd like to do a shout out to Hollis Turnbull and also Tim Bardley that were very welcoming to us when we were at the Federated Church for our for our time there. They were fantastic. We moved back to the Senior Center on March 5th with the help of Heather and DPW team. They moved us back. It was it was no issues. We had not one issue other than obviously everyone knows that we had to delay using our upstairs due to the elevator, but that has been fixed. We've had our elevator open for the last two weeks and everything is going fine. We're going forward with many more new programs. We have an AARP series going on for the next six months, as well as Overlook is doing a community education series with us. Every every session, our sessions run every two months, our newsletter comes out every two or bimonthly, so that's what we consider our sessions. We have a lot of new programs. We have a Medicare counselor now, we're doing crafts, we run a book club, we have a pool league, not a swimming pool league, we have a pool league billiard, so just to clarify that in the community. We're doing grief support, we have a foot clinic, we have a lot of new programs, and that's all I have for you guys. So did I make my time for 10 minutes? Anybody have any questions?
Questions for the board?
I don't have.
I just have a quick one. Is the raising of the flag and the blessings by the priest going to be right at four?
So we are having so we're having a little, we might not be having the raising of the flag tomorrow through the Legion only because of the weather. It's going to be raining, so we are going to raise the flag, but it may not be a ceremony, but the blessing of the building is going to be right after that, so probably about 10 after 4:00.
Okay, awesome.
So they're all churches in town that are coming together, so it's not one, you know, it's all non-denominational churches coming together and they're going to bless the building.
I think that's beautiful that it's ecumenical. Good. And one more question, you changed the lunch pro, is this, why did you change your lunch program?
Oh, so just so that's another thing I forgot, the major thing. So we have a commercial kitchen now, so we just hired two new team members. They one started last week to get the kitchen up together. We had a lot of donations through Hearthstone, Lenny Petrillo donated a lot of our dinner ware and stuff, so she got the kitchen ready and equipped with everything we needed. We had our other staff member join us to get today, so now we have two members in the kitchen. We have a food coordinator as well as a kitchen and program assistant. So our lunch program starts as of March 12th. So that's we will have lunches Monday through Thursday at 11:30. So we're very excited. So what was the question, why we what?
Well, no, I noticed that you said you have a soft opening of your new lunch service.
Yeah, so we're doing a soft opening instead of allowing 50 people a day. We don't know what we're going to expect. So we don't want to, we don't, they're just learning the kitchen, it's all new appliances and stuff, so we want to give them a chance.
Oh, I get it. You know, you know, all right, so it's a new kitchen, not necessarily, you're still using the same?
It's a brand-new program.
Oh, it is a brand-new program.
We've never served lunch, we've never cooked lunch, even in our own facility. So now we have a commercial kitchen.
Okay, so now you can do it.
Yeah, so we are offering, so we got an anonymous donation from a resident, so we're using the funds that that was donated to us for free lunches for Sturbridge residents once a week for the whole summer. So there'll be a lunch every week for Sturbridge residents only. We charge $5 for our Sturbridge residents for lunches per lunch. Out of town is $7, and anybody 60 and under is $10. Our monies that are being offset is our from our formula grant, and that's provided from Elder Services for our residents in Sturbridge.
Awesome.
Mary, any other questions for us?
So I haven't been able to say this publicly, but I do want to say this. I want to thank the building committee, Charlie Blanchard, and all the building committee folks to getting us to where we are today, as well as PMP, General Contractors, they've been excellent to work with. We've had no issues, they've been with us, and they will stay with us until February. So I want to add that, that they've been great to work with. So I thank everyone for this.
Yeah, no, it's great, Leslie.
Yeah.
It's real progress, so thank you, and otherwise, get out of here.
Yes, I'm out of here. Thank you. See you in two years.
And you have a Mother's Day, and you have a Mother's Day lunch?
Yes.
Oh, you already had to register by May 2.
Yes.
Okay, well, Father's Day lunch for those watching, register by June 5.
Read the newsletter, it's online.
I know, but some people don't.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, we still have two minutes, so I'm just going to touch into the action items while we're there, because I think the first few probably will go relatively quickly. I'm going to make a motion to accept the resignation of Gail Watson from the Cultural Council. Thanks for her service.
So moved.
Do we have, okay, so all those in favor? All right, I'm also going to make a motion to accept the resignation of Chris Kastendike from the Design and Review Committee with a great thanks.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, and then I'm going to make a motion to appoint Alex Lane to the Cultural Council for a term to end September 19th, 2026.
So moved.
All right, second. Okay, all those in favor? I'm going to, unless there's point of discussion, I'm going to move to appoint Michael Colette to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'm going to, so we have, all right, so it is 6:45 now, so we can move away from the action items, and I now, Mary, can you please call the public hearing?
Sure. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Hot Stone Inc., doing businesses, Ishi Shabu. I I hope I said that correctly, but whatever, for transfer of liquor license, all alcohol beverages at the premises located at 453 Main Street, Sturbridge, with the Select Board in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 138. A public hearing will be held May 5 at 6:45 in Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge 308 Main Street, and legal notice ran in the Southbridge News on April 30.
Okay, so what's going on? Who's the, where's it going from to?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Russell Chin, and I'm here on behalf of Hot Stone Inc.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chen. If you could just give us an overview, please, of the circumstance?
Yes, this is an application for a common victor's license, a transfer of an all-alcoholic beverage liquor license and a food establishment permit. This is an existing restaurant being taken over by a new owner, and we're here before you for approval of those licenses so that the purchase can go forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, no, that's helpful. So, so Robin, is there anything on this we need to discuss specifically?
Nope, I think everything's been signed off on by all relevant departments.
Okay. Questions from the board?
No, no, it's new business.
Well, that's exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Is this where Baba Sushi?
But Baba Sushi's keeping the building, right?
We're not, we're not purchasing the real estate, just the business.
Not yet, right?
When do you hope to open?
When do you hope to open?
Until everything's, you know, all said, and maybe we're trying to get the license ready, and they say yes, and then we're trying to plan, like, give us a week or a couple days to be prepared.
So in the next few weeks, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Awesome.
When the legal license is ready.
Right.
Yeah, great. All right, any questions, comments? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of liquor license, all alcoholic beverages at the premises currently located at 453 Main Street.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can you pronounce your restaurant for me?
Ishi Shabu.
Say it again?
Ishi Shabu.
Okay, it wasn't too bad. Ishi Shabu. Awesome.
Great, excellent. Well, we look forward to having you guys in town, it's a great space, and you're going to do great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. All right, be well.
Safe travels.
All right. Great. Moving on, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the resignation of firefighter David Tetralp, effective day, May 1st, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the resignation and thank him for his work with the department.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Great, and thank him for, again, I can't, I'll reiterate, we just thank him for his service. All right, moving on, we have a series of one-day liquor licenses for Bay State Brewing Company for the farmer's market on, and their respective dates being June 22nd, July 20th, August 17th, September 14th, October 12th, all from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. My guess, my only question is on the 9:00 a.m., because is this a pour and sell, or is it just sell?
That's going to be my question.
Because if it's got to be a one-day liquor license, that'd be sale.
Sale.
And I don't.
10 o'clock.
Yeah, 10 o'clock would have to be the.
I believe we did the others at 10:00. I will check on that and we'll adjust accordingly. Are they just selling, Robin, or is it drinking on the premises?
I think they may be serving, so that's why I want to make sure it's a, it's 10 o'clock.
It says small samples on request.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I imagine that they'll.
Just a little, yeah.
So, well, I'm, I don't have an issue with it other than the 10:00 a.m. adjustment, because I don't think.
I'm just curious, when they say small samples, so they're giving small samples and then you you buy it off premises, or small samples to decide what you like, and then you can get, like, full beers? Like, I I don't totally understand.
So they're to sell four packs or six packs or whatever.
To-go, though, or are they?
Yeah, to-go, but you'll be able to pour you, here's this, here's that, here's this.
Yeah.
Because it's a.
So it's samples only?
Yeah.
No, because it's two different things. Is it samples only with you take your six-pack and leave, or is it samples to decide what you want, and then you can have the full beer there? I guess, and Robin would know this.
It says to-go beer on here.
To-go. I know, I don't totally.
You don't believe?
We can, we can put it to the 19th.
No, no, I mean, I'm probably going to abstain and you will have to vote.
Yeah, I just, I don't know for sure. I was on the impression samples goodbye.
No, 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 it says small samples on request, to-go beer to be purchased onsite for personal consumption. So I take that to mean that they are not serving beer other than to be, if someone says, I'm interested in this IPA or whatever, and obviously, who's of age, so that, and so I think that that's all, so it's not active service.
That's what I assumed it to be.
Yeah, well, this is what it's written has, and this is what the license will be, so, and if they, so what's important about that is not, is to make sure we're clear about that with them so they don't misunderstand because they're often, I mean, they've been good community partners and they haven't been a problem, so we just want to make sure everybody knows the score. So with that, yeah, so we want to change it to 10:00 a.m., which I don't think is going to be a major.
There aren't too many people out on and drinking at 8:00.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to issue a one-day liquor license to base, multiple one-day liquor licenses to Bay State Brewing Company for this this season's Sturbridge Farmer's Market on the specific dates of June 22nd, July 20th, August 17th, September 14th, October 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with the note being that this is for sale of to-go beer, purchase for off-site personal consumption with only small samples upon request of various of the customer. So, and just with that, before we get to a second or amendment, Frances, it's very important that that is communicated to Bay State unequivocally, okay? And if there's an issue, we need to have a further discussion. So with that, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. So it's three in favor and one abstention. Okay, so then we're going to the last item, which is, I think, something that came up, I don't know if I was here or not, regarding consideration and possible action on the banning of nip sales in the town. So, Mary, I know that this is something.
Chair Goodwin, if I could, Vice Chair Kabinsky messaged me and asked if we could hold that for two weeks so he could be here for the discussion?
Yeah, I don't think we were, I was personally, I thought this was going to be a more of a larger conversation anyways, because I think we have to talk to any affected businesses, make sure the community knows, just so it's.
And it's not.
And if I may add it, because I requested it as an agenda, agenda item, it's exactly what our chair said, I think it should be an agenda item where people who are interested come, and this isn't set up like a motion for right now to do away with nips, it's to discuss the possibility of what our rights are there, because we were informed, we thought that we didn't have the right to.
And we do.
Govern it, but we do, because several, I know several Cape communities have done it, the city of Newton has done it. So, yes, I don't, I think it should be an agenda item, and where interested people who are affected can come in and.
Yeah, so I guess the first part, the starting point for all of it is to make sure we're all singing from the same hymn book, which is to see who's affected, what are the sale, you know, get some data on it, because it's not, you know, what we're basically kind of, the tension point, as I see it, is that between sort of business rights and kind of public health and public safety piece, and how do we deal with those things, which we're always dealing with with alcohol sales. So, so I guess it's, I so I guess that would be my thought, is that let's see, what are the affected licenses, and then, and we should probably reach out to the impacted businesses so they can speak their piece about it, and go from there. Does that sound right to everybody?
Yeah, no.
And Robin, if you can.
No, it's good to get input.
Yeah.
Right. Robin, if you can get any information about some of the other communities that did so, you know, what process did they use, that type of thing, I'm just curious.
Sure.
Because I'm sure they researched it, and, you know, it seems like there, it seems like that when I researched my, in a very preliminary manner, it looked like there are a lot of, like, tourist areas, and I'm just wondering if they had more, you know, nips on the side of the road, like what we experienced on on Route 15 and in our downtown areas. There are, there are a tremendous amount of nip bottles everywhere, and so I'm just curious what other communities, how they handled it.
Absolutely.
No, it makes sense, and there's some fact-finding to it. So, okay, so we'll table that for now, unless there's any other discussion? Nope, hearing none. We're moving to old business. Mary Lou, any old business?
No. Wait, you missed an action item.
Yeah, we didn't finish.
Revised, Jen.
I did G. No, I did it. G was the last.
No, H.
H?
I don't have H.
I don't have H, maybe I have the wrong.
It got revised earlier today, I apologize.
It's okay, what's H?
Consideration of possible action on signing an easement for One River Road. These are the easements that had passed for One River and Nine River. There was a holdup on the actual signing of this because we had to get some adjustments from Old Sturbridge Village. It's all been resolved, and we just wanted to put it in front of the board officially to have you all vote to sign.
Okay. I don't have the paperwork, but, I mean, I don't, so basically, the, it was, you said it was, were the address numbers 6 and 9?
Yeah, this is what, this is One River Road, this, the board had already voted to support this easement, it's already gone through town meeting, it's already been drafted, it literally needs your signature.
I get, I get all that, I'm asking for the actual, because I don't have the agenda item, so.
Frances has, Frances has the documents, it got dropped off by trails on Friday.
But, okay, I understand that, so the location is One River Road and where else?
One River is the only one you're worrying about today.
So we are one easement on One River Road?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to execute the easement, well, I guess I have to sign it, so someone else make the one. So, Mary, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we sign the easement for One River Road. Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. Okay, now back to old business. Mary Lou, you said you didn't have any?
No, I do not.
Mary Dowling?
Yeah, I just got a couple of quick ones.
Where do we stand, Robin, with respect to the draft letter that you were preparing for the board's signature to the members of our Tantasko School Committee about using the track more, using the pool more, what we discussed at our meeting, when I think our chair wasn't here, and I don't believe Mary.
Yeah, no, I apologize, I actually drafted and sent it on behalf of the board, I misunderstood if you wanted it back from you. I said on behalf of the board and invited a school community member to respond to join.
Oh, okay, did we get a copy of that?
Um, I, I don't, you may not have, I forwarded that to Frances Thursday. Frances, if you could forward that letter.
Okay, I mean, that's fine now that it's done, but my understanding was that you were drafting it for all of our signatures to make it a little more impactful?
I wrote on behalf of the board, but I apologize.
Okay, no, that's fine. So you sent it to our representatives, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and where, it went off on Thursday?
I believe Thursday, I think I sent it to our representatives and the superintendent.
Awesome. All right, they, is it still me?
Yes.
Okay, and the other business I had is, where do we stand with the landscaping around the triangles and the Welcome to Sturbridge sign?
I, I talked to the landscaper a week and a half ago, and they were getting ready to roll and start working on it. So we should see action soon, I'll follow up with him.
Awesome. Okay, that's it for all of them.
And the letter to the church also went out on behalf of the board.
Awesome.
Great, all right, Mary Blanchard, any old?
No old.
I have no old either, so going to new, I'll have, so we, you listed selection of Representative Tiff for Tiff Committee, Robin?
Yes, there needs to be a board member to serve as a representative on the Tiff Committee. Yes, there needs to be a board member to serve as a representative on the TIF committee. In the event that we have a TIF situation come up, we may have a request coming relatively soon, so I just want to have the person in place when that happens from the board.
Okay. Anybody want to do it?
Well, I've done it.
Yeah, do you want to?
I don't mind doing it, no.
So I'm fine with that, everybody else, it's fine, I will make a motion to...
Too late.
To appoint Mary Blanchard as our representative for the TIF committee.
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent. All right, now, I have no new, other new business myself. Mary Blanchard?
New business? We haven't done Robin's evaluation yet.
We should, so why don't we, Robin, we're past the point a bit. Robin, can you please do a self-evaluate, let's say, would two weeks be enough time to do a self-evaluation?
Sure.
And then...
I can do that.
And then why don't we, what do you guys need for time to do it on our end?
Well...
We'll send out the forms, right?
Yeah.
Are we going to have our annual...
Retreat?
Retreat before? Did, did we do it before, so we've discussed new goals, or this is only going to be in our past goals?
This is...
I know, for the year before, I get it.
Yeah, this is her evaluation.
Yeah, I think that the way you would do it, yeah, I think we would do the, she would, we, every, she would do her self-evaluation, we would, each would work on our individual evaluation, then review her self-evaluation, then we'll combine the, the other evaluations, and then I think we do the, the retreat after to set goals for the next year, within light of that information.
Yeah, we do that in the form...
The only time constraint for the evaluations is you have to set any type of a percentage increase for me before the end of the budget year on the 30th of June.
Okay, so before June 30th? So, okay, so why don't we, so Robin, can you have Frances circulate the forms that we used last year? And to, to the board, what we'll do is then, let's say for two weeks, let's say, two weeks now, everybody have their feedback to me. If you need more time, then that's fine, just let me know. And then, Robin will do her own evaluation contemporaneously, and then...
Can I suggest maybe an alternative? I think last year, I would like the benefit of seeing her self-evaluation in filling mine out, because, Robin, I think that's the way you did it last year, and you also showed your progress on the goals that we set forth for you, because that's one of the things we evaluate. Is, is that okay?
Yeah.
Because I think it's very useful, I mean, she knows exactly where she stands on her various goals, and it's hard to...
Okay.
You know, I may not give you the benefit of the doubt, I may say, oh, you need to do a little more on this, and you actually did, so...
So let's do this. Robin, we'll still do, issue, have everybody send out the forms now and do the thing. We'll give Robin two weeks to do her self-assessment, and then within, basically by, let's say, 5:30, let's have everything to me, so then we're, we can hopefully be ready for the June meetings, and we don't have any issue talking about Robin's goal.
Okay, so she gets two weeks, and then what do we get after receiving that? A month?
Two weeks would be 19, 11 days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
When, when I heard 5:30, I thought it was like the same day. I was like, I should, I'd be able to get it to you prior to that 19th meeting.
Yeah, I mean, listen, we should...
That's plenty of time for me a week.
We should have this all wrapped up this month, if it pushes over a little, so we still have a little wiggle room if there's some delay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for that, Mary. Okay, great, so then, all right, any other old, new business, Mary?
No.
Mary Dowling, new business?
All right, so maybe for another, full of agenda items these days, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I want to know if we can do some beautification on Route 20. I know we're waiting to see if the state is going to put the roundabout in, et cetera, it could be in the short term, long term. But, you know, when I travel for work or on vacation, there's so many towns, and I brought this up before, and I think the former tree warden said, no, it can't be done, but on the median strip on Route 20, where weeds are growing in between the bricks, and it's kind of not kept well, I don't understand why we couldn't put not a lot of them, and I know it's going to require, you know, the DPW's work, and some small trees on that median strip. Like, if you're, if you go to the city and on the sidewalks, even Southbridge, right on the cement, they have like a little enclosed dirt square, and they put a small tree or a small bush. It's on Route 9, if you go to Strewsbury, it's all over Boston, Southbridge, and I just feel like that will, like, enhance the beauty of, of Route 20 a little bit. So I don't know what kind, if it's possible, I know it requires upkeep, because the leaves will fall off and et cetera, but there's plenty of room for a small growth, because I know when we give away trees, businesses sometimes aren't interested, because they don't want a tree in front of their business blocking their signage. But if it's on the median strip on 20, say every quarter a mile, like, a tree, so it's probably a mile and a half long, talking about four or five trees.
I, I see what you're saying. It's a state road, so they're going to dictate the terms, so it's all going to have to come for them.
Right, and it might be possible.
And to be honest, like, they don't even clean it up in the normal form of maintenance, so I'm not...
Oh, no, it's on us.
Yeah?
Can't imagine. I said, no, that would be on...
No, 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 I mean, but that's, that's not how the, technically, it's going to roll. I mean, we could assume it, but my point is more, they don't even do the baseline, they don't even clean the weeds up on, on it. It's not taken very seriously, so I'm not be trying to poo-poo it by any stretch, much the opposite, it is something that needs attention.
No, I agree, but I don't think, I mean, I think Mary's brought it up before, like, the sidewalks, when they were put in, isn't that was put on us, it was as part of our responsibility. So I'm not thinking the Mass DOT is going to plant the trees and do the upkeep. I'm thinking we try to get permission from them to insert some vegetation, some landscaping on those areas.
Yeah, makes...
That's what I'm saying.
But I mean, we'll have to look into it.
Oh, of course, that's why requesting that as an agenda item.
Starting with the state.
Will that be a safety issue, though?
Well, I don't see why.
Steering vision?
It depends on...
Well, they're not going to be large-scale trees. I mean, they're, like, if you go to Boston, on, on the, on the roads, there's, in our Sun's neighborhood, for example, they've got tree, they've got those square trees all the way down, and those are busy roads. Same way in Southbridge. Downtown Southbridge has trees on all their sidewalks.
Yeah, but those are the sidewalks, you're talking about the...
I know, but the...
Strip in, in the middle of 20.
Right, they're on the sidewalks, Mary, but they, how do I put this? The road is right there, the sidewalk's here, it's going to infringe on the road just as much on the sidewalk as it would on the median.
I'm just talking about vehicles passing.
Right, I know, me too.
So I think, Mary Lou, that is probably going to be an answer that we get. I don't know that it's technically accurate, depending on what you actually were doing or not. I think that the, but I, but I'm not a traffic expert. I think that Boston's tough to compare to, because they have 25 mile per hour speed zones, but the, I do think that, I, I don't know what the answer to the question is, but I think it's, it's the right question to ask, Mary, and I...
And I don't know if there's any support, like, maybe the board doesn't even, you know, we have a discussion, and the board's like, I'm not for it. But when I go through down Route 20, we do not have a very desirable looking, that's why I wanted to at least some landscaping on the triangles.
Right.
We have, you know, no trees, and I'll try to take some pictures along Route 9, because I know they have some vegetation on Route 9. But I know when I brought it up years ago, the former tree warden said, there's no way the median strip can support that, so I just didn't know, maybe we can take a second look. Or, or if not, you know, huge pots full of...
Flowers and, yeah.
You know, something on, on, on that strip, because it is kind of visual blight, to be honest.
Do we still need position, permission from DOT to put barrels on that?
We would need, yeah, sure.
Anything.
But I mean, they've given permission for, like, two businesses to adopt that section of the green space that we never managed to adopt, so, I mean, I'm not sure how difficult it...
I think we just have to, I think that's the question we have to answer before we can talk more in depth, which is, Robin, please get us, the, the next meeting, if you could give us the, the parameters by which we can, or a, a, a total hold or a starting point for how to evaluate what we can and cannot do on this?
Will do.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other new business, Mary? Mary Lou? Okay, on to correspondence. I don't think we had any, did we?
No.
All right, no correspondence? Minutes from April 22nd, 2025? You're playing hooky.
Right. So, well, we got to hold them, because there's not a...
Oh, yeah, there's no, oh, yeah, there's not enough votes.